Good afternoon, everyone. I'd like to call to order the Good Harbor City Council's study session of Thursday, June 30th. The time is 2:01 PM and I will turn it over to our city clerk for a roll call.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Barber. We have you on the line. If you're able to unmute yourself, it's, I believe, star six. We'll wait for your phone. Councilmember Denson.
Here.
Councilmember Henderson.
Here.
Councilmember Lichens.
Here.
Councilmember Rothenberg.
Here.
Councilmember Storseth is excused. And Councilmember Wook?
Here.
We have six of seven present.
Okay. Great. Thank you all. And we will move right into our discussion items. The first item on our list is Pleasure Craft Marina easements. And this is a report by our Public Works Director, Jeff Langholm.
Thank you, Mayor. Afternoon, council. Hopefully you had a chance to read the memo that was provided for this topic. I'm going to do a quick summary of it though. But the city has been working with Pleasure Craft Marina now since, I think it's been about 2015, as they have moved forward with their redevelopment plans for their upland site. As part of this, they had requested shoreline access and direct access to Jersich Dock at Scansy Park from their property. As part of the land use approval, and Carl could speak more intelligently to this than me, but they are required to have public access along the waterfront. That's just a land use requirement straight out from, I think it lives the Shoreline Management Manual, isn't it, Carl? Yeah. Oh, sorry, Robin, you're here too, of course. You can answer those too. But so that's flat required, but they wanted additional access and they wanted direct access to Jersich Dock. And so they had proposed a stairway going between their public access, it's required for the Shoreline Management Master Program, Shoreline Master Program, to Jersich Dock. And so we had discussions with them, the city did, in 2018 and at a couple of different points. In May of 2018, Parks Commission is noted in the memo, Public Works Committee, and then moving forward to council. And then council approved the concept, but said, and I put quoting this in my, from my memo, staff, to return to council with appropriate legal documentation regarding rights and responsibilities. So what we have before you today is just a draft of those easements. Those easements would, is that documentation that would be required? So the, this latest proposal from Pleasure Craft Marina went to the hearing examiner in, I think it was June of 2018. They received their approvals and they have been moving forward with the actual civil engineering, design drawings and everything else, and have a contractor waiting to go to do the work that's required. At first, they're just going to do bulkhead replacement. And then they're going to come back, build a building and build the stairs between the city dock and their property. But it requires five easements in total. Two of them are public access easements that, that are land use and the shoreline requirements that the mayor signs. One is a temporary construction easement, just to get on city property to remove a bulkhead. That's something that Public Works Director or city engineer signs. And then there's two other easements that are permanent easements. Those are the two that I attached to my memo. And I'm going to share my screen just so we can all see what we're talking about, make sure we're on the same page of where those permanent easements would be located. So hopefully you can see on your screen now, this is at the very end of the memo that was provided for today's study session. What I took was the aerial photo from 2021 and overlaid it with the easement dimensions that were provided by the surveyor for Pleasure Craft Marina. And so it's not, it's fairly precise location within a few feet of where they're looking to put the stairs, which is right here where my, if you can see my cursor. And then the rest of this permanent easement is because they have a bulkhead that we have found is actually located a little bit on city property. So they are going to take out the bulkhead at the outer end. That's the temporary construction easement that I'll be dealing with. And they're going to relocate the new bulkhead onto their own property. But they're not need to, they don't need to replace this bulkhead. And so they had asked for, instead of ripping out the entire bulkhead and replacing it just for an access easement, I'm sorry, permanent easement for operation, maintaining their bulkhead. We have been operating under the assumption that this bulkhead was on their property. We don't need it for any future capital project that's on the horizon. So we're not looking to, to, to have them move it right now. Staff hasn't had that as a requirement. So. So that's what we have before you, those two easements and happy to take any questions at this time. If there's no questions, we're going to be moving forward with these two easements to council at the July 11th council meeting. Councilmember Henderson.
Thanks, Jeff. You said there's going to be some stairs built there and public access. What's, what's the public getting access to? I mean, I don't think there's a beach or anything down there, is there?
No, there's no beach. The, the public, I'll bring back up the image and it's just a partial image. So I apologize. You have to picture what's going to go on here. And I could draw, actually maybe I can draw on the fly here. So Robin and Carl, tell me if you think I'm wrong on this, but I think there's a public easement for the shoreline easement that's going to go in this area here that I'm drawing in red roughly. And so, oops, I didn't draw on, sorry.
Yeah, that's fairly accurate. Jeff, and I, and actually I think it might run all the way to the end of the
Oh, does it run all the way to the end?
I believe it might run all the way to the end. And then there's a gate that will will sort of cordoned off the access out to the, the finger piers. And then there would be another easement, of course, that would go to the rooftop of the building that they're planning to build there. So there would be, there would also be a platform viewing area for the public to access as well.
Okay, thank, and which is going to go right here. That building is going to be right here where these cars are parked, I believe.
Correct.
So Councilmember Henderson, back to your question, what that's gaining access to is instead of having to access the viewing area and this public area only by the sidewalk, these stairs are allowing the public who's here on the city's property to gain access up to that viewing area along here. That's what it's writing.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Councilmember Wook.
Yes, I have a couple of questions. I believe I read somewhere that some picnic tables might have to be relocated. Am I correct there?
Yeah, well, that is what I said. I wasn't sure. And it wasn't until, and I apologize, I personally couldn't put in my memo, but it's, they have two picnic tables, one here, one here. These are permanently mounted picnic tables. These are not the kind that are on skids you can grab and move. At first I thought that the stairs were going right here, but I, when I drew it out on this aerial photo, I'm, I'm seeing that it's, and if they were going to, the stairs were going to be here, we were going to have to move one or possibly both of the picnic tables. But looking at where they are now, I don't think we're going to have to move any of the picnic tables.
You don't think so? When will we know what that answer is?
We'll know when they submit their construction drawings, which we, we don't, I don't think we have the construction drawings for the stairs yet. I don't know, Carl. I, I've, I haven't seen them and I don't think my staff has shown them to me. Do you know if we've had those?
I don't think that we do, Jeff. I know we've got some civvles in that are under review, but I don't think that it has any specifics on those stairs. And I could be wrong about that. Robin, do you know any, any more than that?
No, we haven't seen those yet.
Okay.
So we're being asked to vote on an easement when we don't know if the public is going to be affected by having to move the picnic tables?
Well, yeah, I would be shocked. Based on this easement that they have, I don't see why we would have to move our picnic tables.
Okay, so this is, this is a benefit to the business to be able to have citizens get to their business so that they don't have to walk down the, walk to the business from a Harborview Drive. Are we setting a precedent or any other businesses going to come and ask the city to do something to increase their business by giving them some easement right away?
Well, we do receive requests from businesses all the time for improving access from the public right of way to their, to their business. A quick example is Millville Pizza requested access to the right of way right in front of their building. The, the right of way actually begins slash ends at the front of the building itself. Their overhang is in our right of way. And so we often grant businesses that type of access. And so I'm not, I wouldn't say this is setting a precedence. This is following a precedence.
Okay.
Okay. If I could, I'd also add to that, that the, the Shoreline Master Program contemplates connectivity, public access connectivity throughout the harbor area, which is one of the reasons for the requirement to have this other public access easement and the, and the easement on top of their building for the viewing platform. But the, the SMP really, the, the undercurrent of the SMP is to try and get the public to the shoreline and to create some connectivity down there for them to do so. So I think when, when this, when the land use plans were approved for this, I think having that connectivity to the park was keeping in the spirit of the, of what the SMP's intent is.
So the public viewing area, is that, is that going to be, are the, is the public going to be able to access this public viewing area all hours of the day? What are, are there time limitations? Are they, is there any kind of limitation?
There are limitations on it and it's based on the, on the business hours of the building. And that's, and that's fairly, that's fairly common where we have these easements. And, and we have several examples of these around the harbor currently.
Can you let me know which, what those examples are?
We have one at Bricks, the New Bricks 25. We have one that will be coming online at the Seven Seas, the new Seven Seas location. We have another at the, oh shoot, what are the condos over by the estuary, by Austin Estuary?
Murphy's Landing Marina and Edgewater. Is it Edgewater?
Yeah, Edgewater. That's it. Thanks, Jeff. Yeah. And there's, there's connectivity over there. Now those, those might be open at all hours of the day because they're not necessarily affecting a business. And I'm not, I'm not sure about that.
There's actually a gate at the top of the stairs for Edgewater condos. So I, I think that one does get closed.
It does get closed at some point.
Yeah.
So, so our public really doesn't have access to the viewing platform all the time. Is that appropriate? To block off public access?
Well, I think the reason behind it is that the, the, there's some, there's some liability for the, for the business owner to allow the public to have access to those areas at all times of the night. So if there's, if there's no one monitoring that area, for instance. So I, I, I think that it, I think that it is appropriate. I think that there should be some limitations on it so that there's some sort of oversight in those areas, particularly when, when it's a rooftop deck like this is.
And I want to say that business hours for a restaurant are typically after dark. Park hours are only from dusk, or sorry, dawn to dusk. So in, in theory, public will have more access to the restaurant rooftop because those hours will go beyond dusk.
Oh, I thought they were not, I thought this was not available when the restaurant was open, but you're saying, so if the restaurant is open and the public has access to the viewing area?
Yes, that's correct. I'm sorry. If I misspoke, I apologize.
Maybe it's my ears. Okay, thank you so much.
Councilmember Rothenberg?
Yeah, I, I think that this is not just a benefit to the, to the business or to the marina. I think it's a benefit for the public. And, and that being said, since that parking lot is a restricted parking lot, isn't there some way we could gain a few city parking spots in that, in that parking lot if we're going to compromise and let them have their easement? I mean, can we negotiate that or is that out of the question?
I love the smiles on Carl and Robin's face.
Man, I, I think that's a reasonable, we certainly need the parking downtown. But I'm, I'm in favor of the easement. I think it benefits everyone. So just like, we ought to grab a couple of parking spots.
Smiling because I think it's a fantastic idea. And I, I wish it were something that we had contemplated, maybe when we were doing the land use approvals, but I think it's probably too far gone at this point to be requiring anything like that.
Next time, come see me sooner, huh?
Will do. Councilmember Rothenberg.
Maybe we can still work something out. We'll see. It's not done yet. Any other questions for Jeff or Carl or Robin on this one? Councilmember Denson?
Yes, Jeff. The bulkhead that is on city property, if they were to remove it, would that be of any benefit to us in terms of mitigation for the commercial fishing home port pier that we need?
Good question. Yes, it would, but the timing wouldn't work out.
Oh, shoot.
Yeah, because they're looking to have that bulkhead work. I mean, they're, they're getting, their contractors chomping at the bit to get ready to go. So, and we don't even have our land use permits yet. And as we found out for the Jerkovich Pier removal, nothing's a guarantee when you bank waterfront mitigation or have advanced mitigation.
Councilmember Barber, I see you unmuted. I don't see a hand up, but did you have something you wanted to comment on?
No, I'm, I'm listening to the conversation and I really liked the idea of trying to get those parking places filled.
Okay, thank you. All right. Well, thank you, Jeff and Robin and Carl for all of your work on this. And what, what are you looking specific direction from council? What do you, what do you need? Or is this just informational?
This is informational. I had a conversation with Councilmember Wook and she asked me more information about it and then requested it be presented to council of a study session. The intent is to come back to council with a agenda bill at the July 11th meeting requesting formal authorization to have the mayor sign the two permanent easements.
Okay. All right. Great. Well, thank you so much.
Thanks.
We will move on to item two, which is our appointment process for advisory boards. And this report comes from our city clerk, Josh Sicker.
Thank you, Mayor, and good afternoon, councilmembers.
Thank you. Bye, Robin. Thank you. Have a great day. And Jeff, if you log off, great vacation. Happy fourth, everybody.
Thank you.
Sorry, didn't mean to interrupt. I was just noticing people were wanting to leave, so I wanted to acknowledge them.
So yeah, this item before you is to go over the appointment process for advisory boards. If you remember at our last study session, I came to council and asked council department ad hoc committee to interview for the planning commission vacancies. I later realized that that was a mistake on my part because the planning commission vacancies are appointed by the mayor and no longer interviewed by council as we don't have the board and commission candidate review committee anymore. That sparked a discussion and I heard from a few council members with their concerns about the appointment process. I actually heard from council members on both sides, some wanting to know if it was possible to make the appointments all be required to go through the council member interviews and others that wanted to see if we could move forward without having the interviews at all and just assign the mayor with the appointment process. So that sparked some discussion internally with staff and we talked with our city attorney, Daniel Kenny, on it a little bit. And Daniel pointed out some guidance from MRSC that we haven't really taken into account in our discussions before. We've discussed the appointment process that we use for advisory boards several times off and on throughout the past two or three years. And one of the things that I've noted after consulting with city clerks from around Pierce County is that Gig Harbor is currently the only city that, the only code city that uses some form of a council committee to interview the applicants. What Daniel pointed out is that MRSC has, has provided guidance and this is kind of what most cities follow. The, the members of advisory boards that are established in, by the municipal code are standing boards. Those, those members are considered to be appointed officials. And by state law, if you are a code city with a mayor, council, former government, the, the right, the ability, the responsibility to appoint appointed officials rests with the mayor. So really we have, I think currently four boards where our code says that council appoints the members. I would think that what we are recommending here is that we change those to be in line with the state law and what other cities do and acknowledge that those boards are mayor appointed. So there would still be a confirmation process through council. Council will still be involved in the appointment process insofar as we would, you know, let council know who's applied and get council member feedback before the mayor makes a recommendation. But that responsibility for appointment, interviewing, going through that process would be something that the mayor undertakes with staff support. And then council will be doing the confirmation of the appointments. So the recommendation that we put into this memo is that we come back with an ordinance that revises the four committees that are still council appointed. That's the Parks Commission, Arts Commission, Design Review Board, and Lodging Tax Advisory Committee. And change those to be mayor appointed committees. We'll go through the, the internal interview process and review process with the mayor making the selection and then come to council for approval. So if council is agreeable to that, we can bring an ordinance back at the next council meeting to, to make that change.
And Daniel, thank you for being here as well to answer questions from council.
Totally.
I'm happy to take any questions or if Daniel has anything he wants to add, that'd be fine too.
Yeah, I mean, I guess I will just quickly add to what Josh said and, and I agree with what he said. The structure of appointment by the mayor and confirmation by council is the way that it typically works. Confirmation by council is only required when it is explicitly included in the code. And further only required or wouldn't be required if there are exact requirements and specifications for the position. Essentially, council would have already established the criteria for a position and therefore don't need to confirm it. That's not particularly common, to be totally honest. So typically it's appointment and confirmation. And I, I would not view it as appropriate for council to require certain actions of the mayor to make an appointment. For example, certain types of interviews or attendance by council for an interview because you come next, right? You're the confirmation. And so the mayor can put forward whomever the mayor thinks is appropriate for that position. Now, practically speaking, there's typically a process that is in place to go through for, you know, seeking applicants, reviewing applicants and putting forward somebody for that position. So.
Number Barber, is you, Councilmember Barber, could you mute your phone, please? Do, do you press star six again, Josh, to mute?
Yes, star six on the phone should do it. I know, I know Councilmember Barber's been having some issues muting and unmuting.
Oh, okay. I think, I think she got, thank you, Councilmember Barber, very much. You're getting some feedback. All right, go ahead, Daniel.
Yeah, basically, so practically speaking, there's always some process and it's very common for the mayor to include, you know, staff, you know, or council members or whatever in that process, but wouldn't technically be required to do that because it's a mayoral appointment with council confirmation. I have seen kind of a juxtaposition between a council adopted process for that whole, that whole shoot match. And it's kind of the council's expression that we're not going to confirm somebody unless you've done a process that we're comfortable with. I think that's a gray area. I think that's telling the mayor what to do, probably improperly. But also you don't have to confirm as a council unless you're comfortable with the person that's being selected. So it really kind of, there's a weird little balance there in the middle where both sides kind of come together. But really appointment and confirmation.
Councilmember Wook?
Thank you. I have two things. So since 2018, have we been doing this illegally? Daniel?
I mean, I, I guess I'd have to look and see what actual appointments and process were used. I, I would have thought that there would have been mayoral appointments. Now, if the mayor during that time period for what, foregone, forewent, for whatever, that, that process or that right, that's a separate discussion, but.
So I don't think that the, that he did not appoint. He did appoint, but we had council members that were also involved in the interview process. So am I hearing that that was illegal? We should not have done that?
No, 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 no. I, I think council members can be part of that process. That's what I'm saying. Like they're, they're practically speaking, there is a process that mayor and administration will go through to publicize an opening on Planning Commission or Arts Commission to receive applicants, to review applicants, and then to get to an appointment. And I think that it, it would be common to include council members in that. But I don't think council can require the mayor to include council members in the mayor's appointment, if that makes sense.
Yeah. So he used to sit in on all the, when I was on the boards, he used to sit in on most of the interviews, which is fine. And, and the ones that the mayor appointed, then, you know, he appointed and we used to have some conversation about that. And, and there was an agreeable thing. I think that, I don't think he appointed somebody that the, I mean, I think it was agreed upon from the council from that committee. And I do want to say one thing because this is really important and I don't know what to do about it. Long before I was elected to the city council, I was involved and I paid attention to things that went on at the city. I was, I started off on the Arts Commission and then along with some of our other citizens, I attended, I attended city council meetings and I attended some planning commission meetings and we had one of our former mayors, Mayor Hunter was a good mayor, Mayor Hunter was a builder. And he appointed, and at that point, the people who were on the planning commission were builders, were real estate, and they were developers. And I was in one of those meetings and I heard one of the planning commissioners say, and because this is an exact quote, "We have to make it easy for the builders to build." And that is my concern that we have one person, not this mayor, but I don't ever want that to happen again where you have a, a mayor who has a particular point of view and maybe is a builder. You know, that's, it's, the planning commission has a lot to do with what they recommend to the, to the council. And I would just hate to see, I would hate to see the planning commission or any commission be loaded with all one or two types of people. And, and that planning commission that was there for several years is part of the reason why this city is in a lot of trouble with traffic. And so I, I don't know what to do about that. And I'm not trying to say the mayor should not appoint. I don't agree with that either. I mean, I think the mayor should appoint whatever needs to happen. But I just don't want this to ever happen again. It was, it was a bad situation.
Yeah. And, and just to be clear, the current code for the planning commission is mayor appoint, council confirm. So that hypothetical would not occur under the current code.
Well, it could if the ma, if the council did not confirm, right?
The council always has the obligation to confirm each appointment. And so the only way that a planning commission would look or feel any certain way is if both the mayor appointed and the council confirmed everybody on it. And at that point, I would argue that it is a properly constituted planning commission and it is what it is.
Right, absolutely. And I don't doubt that that's the way it happened. It is, it is an uncomfortable situation to actually, I would think to to actually call a volunteer out during a full council meeting. And I will do it. I will do it. If we continue, if this, if it really looks like we're going to have builders and builders and real estate and developers on the planning commission, I will do it. But I would certainly rather have, I wish there were some way that we could have some council members involved with the interview process with the mayor when she appoints. That it could be a little bit more open than just the mayor interviewing, any mayor interviewing. This is not about Tracy. Don't take this about you, Tracy. This is, this is so that what happened before doesn't happen again. And, and that the council does have some involvement in the interview process. So that is my concern. And, and I would like, I would like to see the council have some, some involvement in the interview process, even though the mayor appoints. And I'm favor the mayor appointing.
Thank you. Councilmember Henderson?
Thank you. Josh, did you have a procedure set up if we give guidance to move ahead with this? Like, I think maybe to alleviate some of Jenny's Like, I think maybe to alleviate some of Jenny's concerns, there might be an option that council members could listen into the interview process, that we have a little bit more background, or at least clearly, I hope is we'd be able to see everybody's resumes that are applying for any one of the given positions. I'm thinking, though, that maybe the option of just city council people sitting in, not questioning, not interfering, letting the mayor ask the questions, whatever, and then she decides. And then we'll have a little bit more background and say, yeah, we would have done that too. I'm just not sure what's, what procedures are going to be set up, or if you had any ideas.
Yeah, so once this is in place, we may do a written set of procedures for how the mayor would prefer to make the appointments. But really, it's, it's at the mayor's discretion. If she wants to have just a simple phone call with each applicant, she can do that. If she wants to delegate to a staff person to have them reach out and have an initial phone call before she makes a decision, that's an option too. It may not be uniform for each board. It's really going to depend on, on what her preferences for doing that. So I don't think we will have like an official interview session like you're familiar with, where we'll have staff people and the mayor and chairs and gathered and collected and doing a formal interview process. So I don't know that that would be an option. It might be something the mayor would like to do and we can discuss that down the road. But at this point, I don't think we've discussed doing that.
Councilmember Lykins.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So it sounds like there's a checks and balance in the system inherently with the mayor appointing and the council, you know, voting on the confirmation so that we have a chance to look at their applications. And I'm sure they'll put something together. Now, does that confirmation process, that happens in open session, correct?
Yes.
Typically, those go on the consent agenda for council.
That's what I've seen before. I just didn't know if it was something that involved an executive session or how it worked. So, so we have a chance then every time there is, you know, those nominations to pull that out of the consent agenda, if there's concerns, and do a vote on it, correct?
Yes.
Okay, okay. So there is a checks and balance that way. Okay, thank you.
Yes, and even though we don't have a process worked out yet, because we're just bringing this to you, you know, today, my, my intent is to always send applications and resumes received for each one of these appointments to the whole council to solicit your feedback. And so that will happen for sure on all of them. How the interview process happens may change depending on the position and which commission it is. But definitely council will see ahead of time the application and background information on each person with the hopes that you will all provide your feedback on what you think about these, these folks. So just, just so you know, you will get those resumes and applications because I do want you to see who's applying and be able to give your feedback on that for sure. Councilmember Rothenberg.
Yeah, I appreciate you saying that, Mayor Markley. That's, that makes us all feel more comfortable. But to Jenny's point, someday you may not be mayor and we may have somebody else. So I'm thinking that, like a lot of things that we discuss, we discuss things in work sessions and executive sessions. So if we don't want to, if there's a hesitancy amongst council people to object to a candidate, maybe we could, before it goes to full council, maybe we could have a meeting in executive session or even a work session and saying, I'm thinking about John Black being on the Planning Commission. And people could say what they wanted to and it would help. When it went to council meeting, we'd all pretty much already be in favor. At least you know what consensus was. So when it comes time to writing a procedure, maybe along with what Mayor just explained and the fact that we could discuss it ahead of time, might be a good idea, just as a matter of practice.
Is there being RCW for that, Daniel? I was thinking there isn't really one unless you're, well, qualifications of an applicant, but that's for employment with the city, not of that advisory volunteer.
Exactly. Yeah, I was just looking at him. It's evaluations of the qualifications of an applicant for public employment or, or performance. And then there's a separate one for evaluation of qualifications of a candidate for appointment to elective office. So if you had an opening, that, that's where that would qualify. So I, I'm not aware of one. I mean, it's typically, it's kind of a policy question, right? This is a board that's working for you, for the city, for whichever board it is, and who's going to be the best person on that board. And so, you know, there've been a couple of comments, yeah, those discussions need to be hopefully respectful and productive, given that there are people, you know, possibly sitting 10 feet in front of you or on Zoom. And those can get a little bit awkward, but I think everybody that applies and everybody that's on council should understand the dynamics of those discussions. Some of you, I'm sure, went through it in some way or another when you were on other boards and commissions for the city. But yeah, I mean, really, and then additionally, if you, if you do have interviews where council members go, that maybe, maybe noticed as a public meeting anyway, depending on how many people attend. So you just have to keep an eye on, you know, that structure.
Yeah, Councilmember Denton.
Yes, I think it's, this has been our tradition for a long time for council members to be involved in the appointment process. So I'm not sure if we have a choice or not, but I'm sad to see that going away. I remember when I was a first, first became a council member, former council member Kadzik Paul told me that you should get on the Boards and Review Commission because it's so fun to work with the public and this public excited about getting involved. And, and he just said what a, what a pleasure it was to serve on that commission. And so I did. So I have kind of the same concerns as some of the others in terms of calling somebody out at a council meeting and saying, oh, no, we don't want that person. We want this person. And it just, I mean, we don't want any of our, any of our constituents that have stepped forward to feel bad. And, and there are things that, that we need to consider in terms of the makeup of the council, just like Councilmember Wook said. I liked Lee's idea. I like Councilmember Rothenberg's idea about an executive session to some way where we can talk a little bit more candidly, but it sounds like that's not an option. So I don't know. I really like the way we used to do it in terms of having a council committee. It takes a little bit of the pressure off the mayor too. I mean, we were only making recommendations. The mayor got to make, the mayor could have a different choice. This council just made recommendations to the mayor. And I would prefer to stick with that if, if it's possible. But otherwise, I appreciate Mayor Markley giving us the emails and letting us weigh in because I think we will. Because, you know, these commissions are really, really important. We listen to what these commissions and, and boards tell us when we're making our decisions. So that's, just wanted to express that. Thanks.
Josh and Daniels, I mean, to, to reinstitute like the Board and Candidate Review Committee like it used to be, would we have to go back to standing committees in order to make the code and law compliant? Or can you have a separate committee still when you're doing committee of the whole?
So I think what we're saying here is that we really should not have had that committee in the first place. The, the municipal code currently says that council appoints the members to those committees and that's why we could have the Board and Candidate Review Committee. Our code should not say that. It should say that the mayor appoints. And as Daniel was saying before, it's not really in council. It's not really council's role to say this is how the mayor will make her appointments.
So, yeah, so a couple of additional thoughts on that. So assuming that the code is, you know, kind of brought into alignment of where we think it should be going, could you, could council have a Board and Candidates Review Committee to be involved with discussions with those candidates and make that OPMA compliant? I think the answer to that is yes. Could they require that the mayor allow them to attend, you know, in some way? No. That's the mayor's appointment process. And so, you know, again, what I was talking about at the beginning is that there's kind of this middle area, right, where the two sides meet. And if council adopts a policy that says we're not going to confirm anybody unless we at least get to listen to the interviews, that's putting pressure on the mayor to include the council members, but also doesn't require the mayor to do it. If you want to go forward and ignore the policy of council, council can just simply say, okay, well, we're just not going to confirm those people, right? So again, this is where the two sides meet in the middle and need to find, you know, that harmony to move this forward. Because I think both sides could find a very stern position. A mayor could say, I'm going to appoint whoever I want without ever talking to you. That's my right. And a council can say, I will never confirm, we will never confirm anybody unless we get to interview everybody and we get to do this and we get to do that. Neither side is successful in that, right? And both sides are going right up to the line and not helping each other across the line. And so, you know, if council has a Boards and Commissions Committee to help interview and the mayor invites that committee to participate in the interviews, but retains obviously the right to appoint, you may find a middle ground where once it comes to council for confirmation, there's going to be less kind of heels dug in on something, you know, I didn't get my process, I didn't get my person type thing. But what I would never say is that one gets to control the other sides. There's two sides. Nobody's going to make it on a commission unless the mayor and council both want them on there. Just, it just doesn't happen. And so I think a Board, Board and Candidate Commission on council that is then invited by the mayor to observe or contribute in whatever way the mayor, mayor sees fit, i- is a path forward as long as everybody understands that there's that line right there in the middle.
Okay, thank you, Daniel. Councilmember Wook. You're muted.
So council rules and guidelines, can we, is it possible to put something in there? If we agree upon something such as Daniel suggested, is it possible to write something in that? Would that be a place for us to put some information about, you know, being invited but not appointing or something like that?
Yeah, I mean, I think you could put something in there. Again, a mayor could choose to deviate and a council could point to it and say, we're now not confirming because of our process. I would, I would encourage less is more in adopted policies written down on that because of the different variables, the different individuals and the situations. The more that you have in there about, you know, we need three people, four interviews, six candidates, you know, emails this many days before or whatever, chances are that's going to not happen some for a variety of reasons. And if council goes to every confirmation, you know, agenda bill and says, two things weren't done, therefore you don't get this per policy.
So I think you're right about being loose and, and open. I, I, I think as long as somehow council gets to have the, as long as there is the option of council being included, I'm concerned about when Tracy's not here anymore. And that, I'm really concerned about that. So I like to see something. And, 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 you know, I would like to see something that at least the council, if, I don't know what it would be, but I like to see something. And maybe council rules and guidelines is a good place to put it. I don't know. Wish I had the answer.
I see Councilmember Barbara has her hand raised in the attendees section. So go ahead and, yeah, there you go, Mary.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I, I would like to suggest something, and I don't know how we write this into the mayor's process or something so that it, it addresses the concern of when we have a different mayor. But I like the, the process that we're talking about where it doesn't go to the committee. Because the committee is made up of three of us. It's not made up of seven of us. And right now, with the mayor appointing and asking us for our input by sending us the resumes, all seven of us have the opportunity to provide that input. And I guess, I think that's really critical because it allows everyone an equal amount, an equal opportunity to say something about each of the candidates. So I'm for that more mayor-appointed process than I am for starting the commission. I think it includes more people. Thank you. I'll go back on mute now.
Thank you, Councilmember Barbara. Councilmember Henderson.
Thank you, Mayor. So why don't I suggest that Josh and the mayor get together and come up with a straw man? We can look at it. I think you've probably heard enough about what the council wants as far as levels of input or whatnot. And you guys take a, take a shot at it, bring it back to us. We can look at it and we have suggestions. We can add them and if we like it, we move ahead.
Yeah, Daniel, maybe when Katrina is back next week, if the four of us would like to try to brainstorm this a little bit. See what we, see if we can come up with that happy medium that's still within the law and how our code is supposed to be written. Because we want our code to be aligning with the law, Washington state law. So, yeah.
Yeah, so I think there's probably two sides of that, right? There's a few fairly minor code revisions that'll stand alone and be on their own. And then there will be a potential policy of some sort, whether that's coming from the mayor or in the council rules and procedure. Though, though I will say, I'm not sure I heard a consensus on which way that should go out of this group.
Going to get a, I was going to get a vote, a consensus vote.
I mean, I think we can probably come up with something that will serve the city broadly very well. And so I have no doubt that the four of us can do that. I'm just not sure that I heard that there would be a majority of council in favor of any particular path just yet.
Okay, so I guess those in favor of going with, I guess, this language in this paragraph, the guidance from MRC that just has, you know, the mayor's appointing and decides what process council will be involved in, or how they would be involved. I guess, show of hands for who wants to just kind of go forward as, as it's laid out in the memo. Versus a show of hands of who would like us to kind of explore this further, come up with a different path for this. Is that what, what we're wanting to know, Daniel? Like, kind of just,
Yeah.
Either go this way, only the mayor does it, the mayor decides everything, or come back with options, other options?
Yeah, I mean, sorry, Councilmember Rothenberg, you've had your hand up.
I was just going to say that I agree with, since we're looking at consensus and I hadn't commented, I agree with Councilmember Barbara. I would rather see it in the hands of seven of us and not just in the hands of three of us like it's been before. I would rather see all of us have the input and not a small committee. So that's, that's where I want to add my consensus.
Okay, so Barbara Rothenberg, Brenda, or Councilmember Lykins.
That's okay. I agree with Lee and Mary. I, I think it might be nice for all seven of us to have input. So, in what, in the way that you suggested, Tracy. Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Wook.
So, so I think that this, I think that the seven of us having input is still you guys coming up with a path forward for some ideas on this, right? This is, is that part of the seven of us doing that?
Yeah, so like, so like when I mentioned that I would send all of the applications and resumes to all of council and hope that you would all provide feedback, that could be one of the, one of the ways that all of council is, is involved. The way that, I, I think, if I'm remembering correctly, the way that it was before, only the three people that were on the Board and Candidate Review Committee got to see those applications and be part of those interview processes. And the other four council members didn't see any of it. They just trusted the recommendation of the committee. As, that's what, that's what how it used to be, right, Josh?
Yeah, that's true.
Yeah, so this would be a way for all seven council people to participate. And then we would come back to you with some ideas for how that, how all seven of you could participate without OPMA violations, without, you know, like, I would want, I would want to think through how the interview process would go. You know, because you can't have all seven of you there at the same time for an interview because then, because that's an open meeting and then it's kind of defeating the whole purpose of everything that we're talking about. So there would have to be some options we would come up with for how to get input from all seven and have that be equitable. for how to get input from all seven and have that be equitable. So, I'm voting, I hear what you guys are saying.
So I, I'm in favor of all seven of us being able to have all the information and being able to have some input in some way.
Okay.
So, so I, I, so I think there's a general consensus that, that, on not reforming a subcommittee and having all seven council members getting information. And I think that again is separate from the fairly minor code revisions that the, that the memo outlined. And so I think that, that can move forward. We can, you know, prepare that for review. And then separate from that, I think what I would envision is the mayor creating a policy on how the mayor will proceed with appointments. And that would include things like all resumes received will be provided before interviews and a video recording of the interviews or a listen-only mode for council members will be available so everybody can hear the interviews. Perhaps the mayor would create five questions that everybody would be asked and those would be provided to council in advance so that they understand what the mayor is looking for. Council can always provide input to the mayor on things like that. But all of those things aren't confining the mayor, but they are providing kind of open flow, flow of that same information to council. I, the thing that I don't think you're going to get, and, and I, I just don't really think there's a way around it, is an opportunity to discuss and digest the candidates without that being in a council meeting. That's just not, well, it's just not how it works, right? So, so I think that the mayor has that opportunity not being subject to the O P M A and you all will have lots of information in advance to personally digest and to process. And then come to that council meeting with input. And you can always provide input directly to the mayor on a one-on-one basis. That's always fine. Do not C C everybody and reply all or anything like that. But the mayor can certainly, you know, if somebody says, I got the seven applicants for planning commission, Councilmember Wook can email the mayor and say, wow, two, four and five really look stellar. You know, I, my recommendation is that they get an interview. Mayor doesn't have to follow that, that's fine. We all know that. But, you know, input and collaboration is, is possible at that point.
Right.
Is it possible to make that policy something that can carry over from mayor to mayor or will that end up being a mayoral choice each time?
Correct, yeah. I mean, we can't bind the next mayor and, but, but, but again, the, the same advice will come from Josh and from myself to, to the next mayor, whenever that shall be, is you, you can't force council to confirm. So, everybody's got to play ball on these. Yeah, and i- if, if they want to play hardball, they can do that and then we'll just have openings on commissions. This is how that's.
Which would just be a bummer. So we don't want that.
Yeah, nobody wants that.
Yeah, and, and you, you know, I, I appreciate your, your faith in me, council makes me happy. You know, you, you guys know that I'm a team player. I'm not a one-woman show up here. I don't like operating that way. I really value your opinion greatly on these people. Because you, you all also probably interact with these folks even more than I have time to do. And so I really value what you have to say about these folks that are applying and, and so I think we can, I think we can move forward in, in this way and then just, you know, come up with a way that everyone is comfortable with how they provide input and how this decision is ultimately made. So that when we get to that council meeting, it's, it's good. You already, you, you already kind of will know where I'm headed and, you know, it won't be a surprise or anything like that. So I don't like surprising people. You know, I'd rather you know in advance, you know, what I'm thinking so that by the time it gets there, it's, it's there. And then if there's any things to flesh out ahead of that public meeting, we can flush that out individually and, you know, just let's have some good listening sessions with, with one another. So, okay, so we'll move forward, Josh, then with making these minor code revisions. And then I still would like to get together with you and Daniel and Katrina next week or the week after to really solidify what this process would look like and then bring it back to council for suggestions. If that works for everybody. Okay. All right, great. Okay, so then we will move on to our last agenda item, which is our holiday display policy. And this is also a report by City Clerk Josh Sucker.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Yeah, this is, uh, this is on the agenda through the request of Councilmember Wook. We don't have a staff memo for this, but I provided the copy of our existing holiday display policy. It was adopted in twenty nineteen. This policy is the result of several public meetings and public discussions with a lot of public input that council adopted back in twenty nineteen. Essentially, this policy is meant to deal just with the holiday display that's down at Scansy Brothers Park each year. Includes the holiday tree and the assorted displays, decorations that are around the tree. The policy that we've come up with, that we've had in place now for three years, says that any display items around the tree must be owned by the city. We can't, they can't be loaned from private groups or individuals. They have to be owned by the city. They can be donated. But it also provides a limit on the size and number of the display items. So we can have up to six. They can't be more than four feet in any dimension, height, width or depth. And they can, they are arranged around the tree in an order selected by the mayor or directed annually by the mayor. If we have more than six items, and I'm not actually sure how many we have to choose from right now, I don't think that we have more than six because I don't remember having, making a selection in past years. But it's up to the mayor to choose which items will be displayed. In the three years that we've had this policy, I don't know that the mayor has actually been directly involved in it at all. It's been the same six items and they've been put in the same place and city staff just has been doing what it's traditionally done each year. So, if there was a decision to be made, it would be up to the mayor or if the mayor wanted to proactively get involved and change the order of the display, that would be her prerogative to, uh, by this policy. But that's it in a nutshell. It's, this is what we've been using for the last three years and I understand that Councilmember Wook has some thoughts on this.
Okay. Um, thank you, Josh. Councilmember Roodenberg. You're muted.
I read the policy and, and certainly all made sense, but I am curious what the reasoning is that the city must own the, this place. Seems like that's just extra storage, extra handling. And I, I'd like to learn more about why it's important that the city own it.
I don't know, Josh, so I'll let, let you answer that. I don't know the answer to that.
Yeah, that part of the discussion, I don't remember exactly why they landed on that. I know there was some issues with the, the traditional display has the, the crush, the nativity display that's usually in the front that was privately owned. And I think there were some, before it was with the city, I believe we had some instances where that was provided or not provided depending on how well the owner was getting along with the mayor and there was some back and forth about making sure that the items would be available for the city to use. So, I, I think what they ended up with is they wanted to make sure that the city owned them so that the city had some control over them. I, I don't remember the specifics and I think part of that discussion was before I actually started with the city, so.
Uh, Councilmember Wook.
Yes, I, I wanted to have a discussion here because our parks are paid for by every taxpayer in the city. They're paid for and they're maintained by the money from our taxpayers. And so I just wanted to have a discussion about if there is to be an abundance of items that are, are going down into this area and it has to be chosen that perhaps it should be chosen by more than just one person. It should be chosen by a better representation of our citizens than just one person. That's the only thing I, I wanted to bring up and talk about. So that was it. I just, just think it would be nice to have, since our citizens all paid for this. I think it'd be nice to have it being, and if we have to make a choice, perhaps the representation of all of our citizens should make that choice instead of one person. Thanks.
Okay, any other, any thoughts or questions, comments from council about this? Councilmember Lykins.
Yeah, um, it, it's more of a question. I believe you said there's six items. And there's a nativity scene, there's a tree, the, the others are secular, but the nativity scene is the one faith-based item, correct?
Yes.
And is there, is there, has there ever been an other faith-based item? I spoke, I remember last summer when I was doorbelling and, and this is just a conversation on a porch to a rabbi who was asking why the city didn't have a menorah up. And that in the holiday display. And I didn't know the answer. You know, I didn't know the history behind it. But I'm just curious if there's other been considerations for other, you know, faith-based displays as part of that and, you know, either those who were in council before or mayor, if you want to comment. It'd just be interesting just to know the history behind it.
Yeah, well, I can speak a little bit to it. When we made this policy, we knew that there were organizations potentially that wanted to donate items. After the policy went into effect, we did hear from one faith-based organization from the Jewish faith that wanted to have their menorah, which is, I think traditionally the uptown shopping center. They wanted to move that down to the tree and they were willing to donate that. But I believe that was a ten-foot tall item and, and wouldn't, was really upscale and not appropriate for what was there. I know we offered to have them reach out with something that would be smaller and, you know, the appropriate size. And I don't think we ever heard back from them. And I, when we were having the discussion of adopting the policy, there was a lot of talk about potentially other groups wanting to have their items put in here. But after the policy was adopted, we never, we never heard from anyone wanting to do that.
Okay. Okay, great. Thanks.
And these are all items that are generally donated by groups or citizens, right? Like the city doesn't just seek out to go make, make sure there's exactly six items every Christmas at the, you know, it's like, it's if someone comes to us and wants to give the city something and then we, they, we then take possession of it and agree to display it or?
Yeah, that, that's correct. The only item I believe that's been donated is the nativity that was donated by an individual. The other items have been city property for many years, I think. I don't think we've bought anything new ourselves for it, but they've just been what we've had and used for the last several years.
Has there ever been like an, like an open call, like through the Arts Commission or anything like that to have, to invite people? No.
No, we haven't done anything like that.
Okay. Um, Councilmember Barber has her hand raised in the attendees section. Go ahead and unmute Councilmember Barber.
Thank you, Tracy. So my, I have a question. Do we currently have six items that we display?
I don't think we have six.
I think so. I, I didn't count last year, but that's usually I think how many are there, so.
I don't remember what.
What I'm wondering is if we, if we did have, for instance, if the Jewish faith wanted to bring a menorah and it met the size criteria, would we have to amend this P and P before we could accept it?
No, we would not. Yeah, we can accept as many items as we want and the policy just says it's the discretion of the mayor, which six we display. So if we did, if we did accept the donation, yeah, if we did accept the donation of, say, a menorah, we can accept that. We're not required to display it every year. There would be just a decision up to the mayor to decide if this year we're going to display it or if we're going to display it every year and where it would be displayed. But that's all the discretion of the mayor.
But it would also then mean that something that has traditionally been displayed would not be displayed.
Things may have to rotate if there's more than six in the storage and yeah, it, I think things might have to rotate from year to year. Something would have to be missing for another thing to come in.
And aside, aside from the nativity, I don't, I don't think we've heard that there's much attachment to the other items from the community. I think they're just kind of there. I couldn't tell you offhand what they are.
And I think there's a Santa Claus statue maybe and a star or some, I don't know. They're, they're pretty, they're all Christmasy. They're not, they're all, yeah. So I don't, so I think there would be room.
And that's, I guess, what I was wondering was the, the policy says we cannot have more than six. And so something would have to not be displayed, which may be okay, but I, if we were going to amend this, that might be something that we want to look at amending. But I guess my feeling on this also is that I would, this to me is kind of like the advisory committee is, I, I see the city council as being more policy-oriented and this being something that is a city staff or a mayor process of something that they, we don't really need to be involved in. And I guess I would, I would like to leave the policy the way that it is, except possibly changing the number six. And I'm not sure what we should change that to.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Barber. Let's see, I thought I saw another hand. Maybe it's still your hand. No, okay. So, Josh, do you want to kind of, you know, do the same thing, just like a show of hands for those that would like to leave it as is versus those that would like to talk about changing it to a council decision?
Well, at this point, I think that we leave it the way it is unless a council member wants to make a proposal for a change that they'd like to see on here might have support. But I haven't, I haven't heard a formal direction to do anything different at this point.
Daniel, did you have some input?
Yeah, I mean, so, so I was involved with this discussion when it really got rolling. There was potential litigation with the city and lots of policy discussion. I don't recall who, who all on this call would have been around at that time, but it was very substantial conversations. And the policy is intended to ensure that a city-only display is evenly viewed by an objective viewer as not endorsing any particular view. That's the only way the city can do religious stuff. And so that, that was a very inarticulate way of saying that, sorry, into religious stuff, but to, to have displays like this. And so, you know, I, I, I work with councils every day. I, I appreciate the council input, but having, you know, a body of seven voting on, you know, what particular items are in a display, I, I do think tends to go pretty far into just the day-to-day stuff of the city. And I would be worried that you'd start to get votes to get the thing that a lot of people in the community want to see and get too much of that. And if you did do a call for additional donations of these items, this, this all stemmed from, I believe it was the Satanists. And they had a poll that they wanted displayed. They did offer to donate it at one point. I believe Josh is probably right, though, that that was before this policy was put into place. I think it was kind of in the context of everything before it. So I think the, the more the city kind of keeps control on what it's doing and what it wants to do and kind of has a clear path that it's following, the better with stuff like this. My only caveat is that I have not had a chance to read and digest the new Supreme Court case coming out of your neighbor, Bremerton, related to religious expression and governments. I'd like to read that and I, I'm not, I don't, I don't, some, some of the tests that we looked at are invoked in that opinion, but I don't think it's going to implicate this. But I'll do that and let you know.
Okay, thanks, Daniel. Councilmember Wook.
So, so my point of bringing this up was actually so that we don't have too much of one thing, so that we actually have four voices or seven voices. Four, seven voices having input on what goes in the park so that we don't have just all the same thing. That, that was my point and I still think it's a good idea. I guess nobody does think it's a good idea, but, but I don't think it should be all one thing. nobody does think it's a good idea, but, but I don't think it should be all one thing if we have an abundance and, and, and I, I, you know, I, I would like to see more input. Thank you.
Councilmember Liggins?
Yes, thank you. Um, so if, for example, when the neighbor was talking about why we didn't have a menorah, um, we could tell them that if they want to donate a menorah, you know, within the size and provide them the policy, if the policy, you know, we keep it the same, um, that they could reach out and do that. That's correct?
So, real quick, I know that I had, just because I was searching here back to those old emails in 2017 and before, I think there was a donation policy on this. I can't recall if that was in fact adopted or not. I, I think it was.
Yeah, there was a separate donation policy.
Yeah.
That in the code at the same time.
Can you share that with us?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, in a nutshell, the donation policy is simply that if anyone wants to donate an item, a non-monetary item, that the mayor can accept that donation, um, administratively, and then the mayor is required to notify council of any donations that are received. So if someone, if someone had donated a menorah, then council would have received an email or a, a memo saying, we have this item now, um, just to make council aware.
Yeah, great. I just, just to, you know, so that people can feel included, that they know an answer. So, okay, thanks.
Are those specifications, like for size, is that in the donation policy? So they are, so they know before they want to donate how big things need to be?
They're not in the municipal code policy, because that's very broad and covers any kind of donation, whether it's.
Oh, right. Or, yeah. Okay, gotcha.
And anybody wanting to make a donation should reach out to us ahead of time, hopefully.
Yeah, okay. Councilmember Roodenberg?
Yes, he, he said that the mayor could accept the donation. Can the mayor also decline the donation?
Yes.
Thank you.
So I guess we're just looking for consensus to see if there's support to put this on an agenda, to make any changes, big changes. I'm not seeing any. Okay. Okay, so kind of like the advisory boards, I will certainly, you know, as the code states, let you know when a donation has been received, or if there's an offer to have a donation, let you know what it is and get, as, as always, get your input on that and see what you all think, you know, depending on what it is. Obviously, if it's something vulgar and would, you know, be horrible for children to look at, I'm not going to approve something like that, and I hope none of you would, would either. But as always, you know, I, I really do want council's involvement, you know, in this as well. So you'll get notifications when someone does give us something, and let me know if you want it in the park, and then I'll make a final, final decision there. So, okay, all right. Well, thank you, council, very much. Um, unless there's anything else, for the good of the order, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn.
Okay, all of us, favor say aye?
Aye.
Okay, enjoy the evening, everyone. It's a beautiful day. Go to the farmer's market. Yes, good night.